I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight. I'd ask the clerk to announce the meeting and call roll, please.
A special session was called to be held Thursday, April 11th, 2019, at 5:00 PM in the fifth floor conference room for a presentation on the Inclusive Play Project. Roll call. Johnson?
Here.
Kane?
Here.
Markley?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Dillbrook?
Here.
Bynum?
Here.
Burrows?
Here.
Townsend?
Here.
McKeonan? Murgia? Alvey?
Here. I'd ask Administrator Bach to make some opening remarks.
Thank you, Mayor, Commission. Tonight, we're here to hopefully advance where we are with the Inclusive Playground Project. This is a project that's been in the work for a number of years. As the Commission approved some money and direction to go forward with this, it put staff on an objective to move forward then to go out and find other sources of revenue to add to this project. And we've been able to get to that point today that we are ready to advance it. And of course, through that process was going through and evaluating sites for where we would put this. And that is really the big question that we're bringing to you tonight with our recommendations with this. I'm going to turn this over to Jeremy Rogers, our Director of Parks and Recreation, and have him talk about the Inclusive Playground and then what our research has told us. Jeremy?
Great. Thank you, Doug. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for having me here. As Doug mentioned, I'm here to talk about the Inclusive Play Project that I've been working on. And most people ask, what is an inclusive playground? An inclusive playground is specifically designed to remove physical and social barriers so all children with or without disabilities can play side by side. So that's a fancy term. The basic term is that a child with a disability or in a wheelchair, for example, would never have to leave his wheelchair. An ADA playground says that a child in a wheelchair can will him or herself to that piece of playground, remove themselves from their wheelchair via transfer station, and then navigate throughout the play system. Inclusive Play says that that child never has to leave his wheelchair, his or her wheelchair. There have been several studies, university studies done on play and how it affects the brain and how it stimulates different aspects of growth and whatnot. Play is very critical to social, emotionally, and cognitive development in every child. So that's very important that we provide those opportunities for all citizens. The reason this is important, 17% of Wyandotte Countyans claim some form of disability. That's according to the last census data. The national average is 13%. So we are 4% above the national average on persons that claim disability. So it's very important that we provide those play opportunities, not only for our citizens, but those individuals that are coming into our county to play. I'm going to play this video that kind of talks about inclusive play and what it means to different individuals.
We have a tagline that we use that I've loved throughout the years, and it's where limitations are forgotten and differences are celebrated. I can't change my son. I can't change the differences that you see. But what an amazing thing if we can start to celebrate those differences.
I can just let Gracie go and drive, and kids will just come up and talk to her. But at other playgrounds, you won't see that happen. But there's just something magical about these playgrounds.
Brayden is a 12-year-old autistic boy. His disabilities are basically, you know, nonverbal in the autistic spectrum. Kids like my son and kids with special needs absolutely have an equal opportunity to play on this playground.
So my son was born with a disability that puts him in a wheelchair. And pretty much everything we do is difficult for Zach. Inclusive playgrounds suddenly started to break down those barriers. The little kids don't care anymore. They realize that Zach can do absolutely everything they can do.
Probably my favorite memory. When all the kids come running in. You know, you had the same amount of mainstream kids side by side playing. You don't see that every day.
Over the years, I've been inspired to continue unlimited play by so many moments that I get to see. It's families get to watch as their children play for the very first time. Gracie, how does this playground make you feel?
Amazing.
Obviously, play means different things to different people. Last spring, the city of Wentzville, Missouri, which is in the St. Louis area, opened a playground of this nature. And I traveled over for the grand opening. And I took some pictures of kind of what it looks like. So you can see, this isn't your average playground. This is not something you can open a catalog up and you can buy. So I'm a baseball guy. I love baseball. So this stadium, the St. Louis Cardinals donated quite a bit of money to funding this. And so it was built like a baseball stadium, which I thought was really cool. The different play pieces throughout, the stairs over there, baseball bat, and then the bases going up. And then, of course, the slide right there. I thought that was really cool. Obviously, you have to have some physical abilities, but I did see a child in a wheelchair that was able to use that. They had to remove themselves from the wheelchair, and their parents pushed them through. And of course, I had to give it a try myself. We left that one out. This one had a, this particular playground, as you saw in one of the pictures, had the, oh, the zip line that shaped on a football field. So it's like you're going into the goalpost, scoring a touchdown, concession stand. Within that concession stand area, there were several play pieces, that interactive play pieces that individuals could use. So obviously, this is not your average playground, as I mentioned. Some of the specifications of what's recommended for a playground of this nature, one to two acres, that's about the half the size of Huron Park, which is right across the street here by the casino. 50 to 60 parking spots. This playground will bring in individuals from all over. People will drive in for this. So we need a place for them to park. Access to water, persons that can't control their body temperature need water to play in. So like a, some kind of a splash pad or fountain, something like that, something to help cool these individuals. Because of the ramps that are needed for wheelchairs, you have to have a slight slope in topography to help, that helps reduce construction costs. The surfacing of these, I don't know if you guys noticed in the video, but it's a tiled, it's kind of like a, there's the port-in-place surface that's spongy, but they also have tiles that connect together so that when they first started building these playgrounds, they were all the port-in-place. Well, at the bottom of the slides, those port-in-place areas would get tore up, and you had to replace the entire area. Now, if something like that happens, you remove a tile, put a new tile in, and that fixes the problem. Fencing around the entire playground's very important. Persons with autism don't understand boundaries. So it's very important that we don't have kids running off or adults running off to where they don't need to be. So it's very important to keep them enclosed or keep them within the play space. Of course, access to restrooms is always nice. When you have that many people in one area, you need some form of restroom. So I want to bring this project to Wyandotte County, as I've spoken with many of you before. The total price of this project would be around $500,000. That includes the design, the build of both the Inclusive Play as well as a water feature. So far to date, we've raised $410,000, which is pretty good, but we're not there yet. So we still have a ways to go. When we did the master plan, it did talk about an inclusive playground being a part of Wyandotte County. And the three parks that they mentioned were Pearson Park, Wyandotte County Park, and Wyandotte County Lake Park. Pearson Park, this is, if you can see here, this is 51st Street. That's 55th Street. Obviously, there's a lake. There is the skate park. There's the splash pad. This playground would go somewhere over there. That's the dam right there. So that is not, it's a steep slope. So it would go on the other side of the splash pad, which is a pro for this. That would reduce costs because it already has a splash pad in place. It's close to the lake, which draws a numerous amount of people. We have quite a few fishermen there. We have people that come just for that lake feature. It's also close proximity to the county's largest percent of persons with disabilities. So I think that's a neat feature for this park, according to the demographics. Some cons, the roads throughout the, throughout the park probably will need to be replaced sometime in the near future, especially if we're bringing in quite a few more people to this park. We'd want to look at doing that. So that'd be an added feature. Because that splash pad is built at the bottom of the dam in a little drainage area, that does flood. So there would be times, sometimes we have to close down the splash pad because drainage there is an issue. Vandalism. Obviously, vandalism is, does not discriminate. We get vandalism, vandalism throughout the entire city. But we do have a high amount of vandalism at Pearson Park. Needs more parking. Parking space right there and right there, combined about 30 parking spots. Okay, so that's Pearson Park. Next, Wyandotte County Lake Park. The place that this would go is right there. That is the, here's the park offices. This is the entrance to Leavenworth Road. And right there is the old tennis courts slash basketball courts. I've heard that there's variant of what was there at one time, but it would go in this area right here, which is pretty big. There's ample parking. We have parking for the playground there for that. There's a trail. There's a shelter there. So plenty of parking, access to water lines. As you guys know, in our CMIP, we're redoing the water lines there. This one was just done this last fall. So great water lines. Obviously, it's open with room to grow. The cons, that bridge right there would need to be rebuilt. It's in, at one day, the little train went across it, but it is not, we do not encourage pedestrian path, pedestrian walk across that. Many would argue that would disrupt the natural look of the lake. A lot of people go to Wyandotte County Lake because of what it is. It's a rustic, natural lake. And so that, that would disrupt that. We already have the large-scale playground right here. This is a playground that has been built on and built on as years have gone on. It's our largest playground in our park system. So we would have to either look at moving that or doing something. We don't want to compete with that playground. The lake is already considered an attraction. If we're looking to bring new visitors into Wyandotte County, we already have several visitors to the lake. So that could, could be viewed as a con that, well, we already have people here. So. And finally, Wyandotte County Park. Okay, this is George Mayan Building. This is Shelter D right there, the A-frame shelter, skate park, and of course, ball fields right here, and our tennis courts here. This, if it proposed, the playground would go in this area right there. There's plenty of parking there. They're not dedicated parking. We'd have to dedicate some handicap accessible parking. However, that's a very large parking spot that can hold up to 90 cars. So that's a plus. It's easily accessible from I-70 and I-435. This park is going to bring individuals into our community from outside. So it's very important that we have a way for them to get there. It's close proximity to shopping, hotels, events, Sporting KC, T-Bones, the racetrack. It's within a two-mile drive of those attractions. With all this area, I don't know the exact acreage of just that area, but is plenty ample enough to, if we wanted to add on to this playground in the future, we very well could. Water lines go, there's water there as well as there. So it's easily accessible to water lines. And again, it creates a new destination for our county that we want to bring people into. The con with Wyandotte County Park is the roads will need to be replaced over time, just like Pearson Park. Because it's one of our main attractions, it gets used a lot. So we would have to replace those, those roads over time. And the, the firm that you saw the video of, Unlimited Play, they came and did a study. And they're the ones that are designing, overseeing the building and construction of. Their recommendation, their professional recommendation, is Wyandotte County Park.
Okay, any questions or comments from the Commission? Commissioner Bynum?
I have a couple of questions. In Wentzville, what was nearby that park for other, for other activities?
That was nearby a school. The city-owned land next to a school. So they built it there. There are some athletic fields that were there. I think some soccer fields and some baseball fields as well.
And so if you get to your goal, it looks like you're 90,000 away from the total money needed. So how long do you think before you would have the total money needed?
Hopefully, very soon. Unlimited Play, that's one thing that they do is fundraise. And they're pretty confident that they could secure that money pretty quickly.
The, you know, in some of your pros and cons, you talked about certain other things that might need to happen in various places. And like the parking at Pearson, that's not included in the cost you're showing for the park, right?
Correct. That's, that's added additional funds that we'd have to find within our Parks and Recreation budget.
And then I, and then I just wanted to comment that I think shade and shade structures are really important.
Absolutely.
Didn't say it, but you know it.
Absolutely. It is very important that we protect those individuals from the sun and provide shade for individuals that do want to play on this playground. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So Jeremy, you mentioned that this is really a destination park, and that the expectation is it would attract people from outside the community. Do we have, do they have any projections about the numbers?
Unlimited Play does have those numbers. I don't know them off the top of my head. But I know at that Wentzville one, I talked to someone that drove three hours just for that playground.
Okay.
They lived in a very remote area. So, but they do have numbers of what this would attract.
Because my only thought would be that, you know, if we look at this as a Wyandotte County project, and how does it serve our citizens, you know, my concern at that location, and again, it's a fairly long drive, and I don't know how many people would need to use public transportation to access that. Not that they could access Wyandotte County Park through bus service or Pearson Park. But that'd be the only concern, I mean, a concern, that how accessible will it be to our citizens? And I do understand the concerns about other spots, but because this is, we only looked at Wyandotte County parks, we did not look at the KCK parks because this is part of the, we have to serve the entire county. Is that how it's?
That's correct. And most of the KCK parks are not big enough. They're not regional draws to host a park of the, playground of this nature.
So for instance, City Park would not be accessible. It, I mean, what we're saying is, I mean, there are other attractions at other parks.
Right.
And one of the selling points of Wyandotte County Park is it would help, you know, activate that park some more. We wouldn't have that same consideration, let's say, for City Park or any, any other park.
Going to City Park, for example, having the amount of open space, an acre to two acres of open space that is close to parking, close to water, would be, there is some open space there, but the topography, it would be tough to navigate.
Commissioner Markley?
Thank you, Mayor. So as much as I would love to have this at Pearson Park, I would have concerns about the proposed location because both of the flooding and because of the lack of visibility from the roads, just the way that the lay of the land is. I like having the Spray Park there, but even with that, that's a concern. So I understand why this is the recommendation. I was going to ask about bus service or some means of transportation as well. So Mayor already hit on that. Making sure, you know, you mentioned that the highest percentage of disabled people is in the Turner community. So we need to make sure that they have a way to get out there. Because although I understand wanting to attract outside residents, we want our residents to be able to use it as well. Shade structures, you can get grants for that. So make sure that you go get a grant for the shade structures. I had one other thing, but I've forgotten it. So I'll tell you later.
Commissioner Kane?
Well, I volunteered the Piper area to build a new park. And, and, excuse me, this was Hal Walker's dream. And, and I don't know where we should put it. But I think it's something that, if we come up short in monies, we need to give them some monies to get this to go. Because I think there'd be a, more people will use it than you can imagine. And the need is there. So I don't care where you put it. I'd rather see you put it at Wanaka Lake. But then you would have to have some bus routes to wherever it's going to be.
I remembered my one other thing. I think I've been seeing some of this happen already, but I would say we need to be cognizant of putting some play equipment at each of our playgrounds that meets this need. So the whole playground might not be accessible, but some of those pieces should be so that people can utilize the playground nearest to their home. And like I said, I think I've been seeing some of that happen with the new play equipment we've been bringing in. But it's just important.
Absolutely. I agree.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. The whole, the entire, entirety of the $500,000 is being raised outside of UG funds.
We have used some UG funds. That was appropriated in 2017 towards this project. So.
Casino grant fund, or not grant fund, casino funds that were allocated toward parks, $100,000 in that one year, and use that as kind of the seed money to start going out to leverage the additional money that he's used to bring in the other $310,000 so far.
So we are going then to look outside the county for the other 90,000?
If that's what it takes.
That's what it takes. I mean, to your point, we need to put some money. I think we already have. I liked what the mayor said about City Park or even Clifton Park. I think there's access to water. I think there's a spring over there at Clifton Park. So I've been told. I've not found it yet, nor have I gone to look for it. And I had one more question. Oh, has, and have we entertained input from the Parks Board yet on this?
Yes, I did present this exact same presentation to the Park Board, and they did not come to a consensus on where they suggest.
They are in support of doing something.
Right, absolutely. Absolutely.
Commissioner Philbrook?
So the Park Foundation Board put a good chunk of change toward that. That's where a couple of hundred thousand came from, to go toward that. So that plus the other 100, and then the rest of the money that, that the Inclusive Play people said that they would raise to make this work is how the money came about, basically. Right?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, that was directly the foundation and through the Turf Fund, I think.
Right.
Big contributors.
Right. So I want to be clear that, that perhaps because of the funding coming from the Parks Foundation, do, can we not look at other city parks, KCK parks? Foundation, do, can we not look at other city parks, KCK parks, as if, if there were other reasons why they might be, you know, more appropriate?
When they did the master plan, they did look at all our, our parks, and this was their recommendation, so that's, if there's other parks that, that you guys want me to look at, I'll be happy to.
I will say, you did have, and we went through and looked at the different pros and cons that are, that, I mean, you can imagine, many of the city parks are out because of the space, you don't want to come in and take out big chunks if you throw in parking and stuff like that, so a lot of them were out of, from that standpoint, looked at some of the bigger ones, like Rosedale Park, I mean, that was one that you spent a little more time and went back to it. I don't recall all the, the reasons, but there were a number of cons that fell into it. You know, how this stands up day-to-day and interaction with people at night, this very big issue with this park as well, and the equipment, and how long it lasts.
Oh, thank you. I would voice some support for Wyandotte County Park, for the reasons you mentioned, but also just the fact that within that section that you identify, you have, you're building some critical mass there. You have the museum, George Mine, the, the ballfields and the tennis courts.
Of course.
And the A-frame structure, which is a, a really neat structure, and I like the fact that, you know, this could add to some of the activity already going on there. Those roads are, they also seem to be used a lot for runners and walkers.
They do.
And that just adds to something else we could do while we're out there. I like that, and I, I would, I agree about the access piece for, for any resident that needs transportation. But I know that with our UG Transit and the ATA, they both seem really amenable to working with groups and people to get them to where they want to go.
Correct. I have had preliminary discussions with Justice Welker, our Transit Director, and he's on board of supporting this project and finding a way to get public transportation out there.
And I might just add to that point, too, on the, as you can see at any of these sites, we're not going to have the mass transit bus line go right up to the park in any place, so it will be whenever we use our direct, when somebody calls for service, to try to get to, I mean, you need to, particularly with those individuals that are coming to use it, you know, with handicap, you need to get them right to the front door of where the park is, so it'll be those specialized carrier services that we have.
I need to correct what I said. What can I tell you? Too many boards, too many sources of money, yeah, I'm sorry. So, the big bulk came from the turf fund.
Correct.
And then some from the foundation.
Right.
And then the others. Thank you for letting me correct my mistake.
So, I, I'm going to come back to this. It, it seems to me that part of the, the beauty of the inclusive play is it's not just those who have special needs, but other kids, right? And that they, they play together.
Right.
And, and these locations seem to be just, are, are other families going to make this a destination? I understand someone who has a son who's disabled or special needs, that they would travel there because it's the only place they could. The question is, will there be enough others who would then play with, as we saw in the, in the video? And, yes, I, I believe there would be. There's one other of these playgrounds in the Kansas City metro area, and it's in Independence, and it's, as you said, there's adults, there's persons that, veterans that like to use it, so they can play with their kids or grandkids and whatnot, and, but there's also perfect, I take my kids to it before, I see people of all walks of life with disabilities, non-disabilities, use these playgrounds. And when I went to that Wentzville grand opening, that's exactly what was there, that not all of them were disabled.
So, how many folks lived in walking proximity to the park, at Wentzville or in Independence?
Within, and I can speak on Independence, and it's right across from the Truman Library on 24 Highway. There is a small neighborhood just to the east of that, not a whole lot, but it is on 24 Highway, so that's why they chose to put it there. Wentzville, it was around a school, so I, I, it was a middle school, I assume there were probably some homes. I didn't venture out too much, so I can't speak to that one.
Mr. Burrows?
Thank you. Well, one, I'm really pleased to see our community has given this serious thought. There is a segment of our population that's not inclusive, and to have an opportunity for them to join with our kids and others to enjoy the simple things in life, I'm very proud of our community for stepping up and, and taking this request quite seriously. No matter where it goes, it's highly needed in our community, and I wish we had the funds today to start the project tomorrow. It's, it's a tremendous opportunity out, the, the park that's recommended, there's a lot of amenities already there, I, I believe it would allow a bus to be able to turn around, you have day trips from the schools, you have local programs that could utilize the park, you're going to have a lot of visitors during the summer months that'll be coming in from out of town, you have the Frisbee Golf, you have the Renaissance Festival, you have those that, families that'll come in, and actually, if the parents want to divide up and, and take them different places, they can. And so, I, I see why this park was favored among, among the others, but I'm extremely supportive of the program, and I'm extremely proud of our community for giving it much consideration.
Absolutely, thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Sorry, I'm having a conversation, trying to figure out, are there lights out there? Take it however you want, I don't like being out there at that park in the evening time because it gets dark.
We do have lights connected to the shelter.
All the shelters?
To this shelter.
Oh, to this shelter.
Yeah, to, I can...
Okay, I've driven out there at night.
Right there.
And to get out to the street as quick as possible.
Yes, if there, just, I'm just trying to get a sense, our, the recommendation was Wyandotte County Park, and whether that's something we want to move forward with, or that's a consensus, or the commission would like us to work on this and bring back for further discussion? I mean, we can bring back more pros and cons, I can take it to Standing Committee and work through, but as he said, 410, we're in a position that we would probably start breaking ground and moving through a construction cycle, you know, in this season, so that's why I'm trying to understand if, if we're okay with this, or we need to, to work on a little bit more.
Commissioner Burrows?
I don't believe we need to study this to death. I believe that there's children in our community that would do this tomorrow, so if you're needing emotion or some kind of action, I'd be more than happy to make a recommendation that we move forward with this project in this location ASAP.
I, I guess I'm, I'm still hesitant on, you know, the kinds of interaction that's going to be, that's going to happen at this site. I mean, I see the pros, I do think it helps activate that space, I think, I understand that, you know, there's, we have access to the water lines, we have the topography, we have those things. I'm still just concerned about just how accessible it's going to be to our community, and whether we have examined all, all the options. I, I just, I'm just not certain of it yet, so I don't know if others feel the same way and...
Well, I'm ready, I'm ready to move forward on it, because I've been working on this project since Jeremy showed up, and so I'm excited about it, I've been talking to a lot of people, and yes, I understand your concerns, I think there's going to be a lot of people there that are visiting that area out there with their kids during the summertime for all the other activities, and all we, that's just one other way to bring people out to that park from people out of town as well, to bring their kids, to have a good time, to visit Wyandotte County Historical Building, you know, and to promote other things that we want to out there. So, I, you know, I see it as, like Commissioner Bynum said, creating more, even more of a, a little bit more activity right around out there. We already have a lot of activity out there. I mean, you see people out there flying, flying their planes and all kinds of stuff out there in the summertime, so I'm, I'm for moving it forward, and I think that we need, need to take into account the, the transportation part of it that you, that you were showing concern about, and so that's just my thing.
Well, my concern on transportation is I don't think we can assume that there would be transportation resources available to serve those who might try to access. But I'm not going to hold this up, I, I, I still have concerns that it will in fact attract sufficient numbers to this site, but that's my concern.
I think I share your concern from a different vantage point, I was just wondering aloud, will people, will, will kids from my district likely catch the bus out there to the park? And I, I, I have, I don't know. I mean, somebody would have to bring them out there, obviously, they can't catch a bus out there, so...
Commissioner Kane?
Well, if we're going to say where we want it, I'd like to see it in, in Wyandotte County Park, except we need to set up a system that say, on such and such a days, give us a call, and we will take the folks out west. We have to have a plan that says, this is what we're going to do, because we don't want to leave out anybody in the community. We have those small buses, we might as well use them, you know, and I think that, that anytime we can attract outside people to this community, and we have something to show, then let's show it, but let's take care of our own first.
Commissioner Townsend? I'm sorry, Commissioner Walters?
I think this park is pretty accessible, and I don't know that it's any less accessible than, than any of the other two choices, for a lot of the same reasons that other commissioners have mentioned, it seems like a, a strong candidate to me. I, I would agree with Commissioner Johnson, I don't think we should plan on it being used in the dark, but I wouldn't think that a, an accessible playground like this would be something that would be used after dark. It's, it's very visible during the daylight hours, so it seems to me that it's a very strong, very strong location. Thank you.
Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you, Mayor. I like the idea of this concept, based on what I've heard here today, I like the idea of anything that's been submitted that Wyandotte County Park would be the place. I agree with what Commissioner Kane has said in relation to the concern raised by Commissioner Johnson, that we set up some type of method that would have to be part of this plan to get those people from the eastern end or midtown who would want to take advantage of this service, have a means by which to do that. Now, the other part of that is if we don't, if we don't go forward with this, they don't have any place to take care of it or, or to recreate anyway, so if we go forward with this, this would have to be part of the plan so they could take advantage. The other thing I've heard is that the roads will need to be placed, is this an immediate concern or a down-the-line concern, and if so, how much money you're talking about? It looks like we're 85, 90% of the cost there, but I've also heard requests for shade, which makes sense, so what's the number we're really talking about?
The road...
I don't know now, but I'm just saying that has...
The road is a down-the, it, the physical road is down-the-road feature, eventually that will need to be replaced, it's not an immediate issue. That 500,000 does include shade for this...
Oh, this does?
Yes.
Okay.
That's part of the playpiece is shade.
Okay. One other thing, if memory serves me, maybe doesn't, wasn't there also some plan to use property around that area for the upcoming American Royal activities, and if so, what impact, if any, would that have? I'm thinking if that's true, that might, it's not?
I'm going to defer to Doug on that one.
Sorry, my head's had to start shaking.
It was in one of the original thoughts we went through, but as that progress, projects progressed, and the star area that was approved is over at 108, between 118th and 110th Street, so it's not on this site.
Okay, well, good. Even if it had been, or it's farther away, I think that's another opportunity to showcase what is happening out here, that, that's why I mentioned it. It's good then that that's not part of this plan, or you, you won't have that encroaching upon what you're planning to do here, so, thank you.
Commissioner Magia?
Thanks, Mayor. How big is this park that you're going to build in Wyandotte County? You showed us one from Wentzville, Missouri, but how big is it, the one that you're planning to build here?
The one in Wentzville was pretty large, it will not be that big. Ours will be about an acre, that's the tiled surface, that's within the fence, it will be about an acre.
So, do we know, like, if a child was going to go out there to play, what the average playtime is on a size of the playground that you're choosing to build?
The stat that I was told is three-plus hours of play.
Oh, so they could be out there a long time?
Yes, yeah, it, it's something that you'd go to, to spend an afternoon, or, or spend a longer time than you will at just a regular playground.
Okay.
Commissioner Kane?
You know, I think, was it Kelly Harb, how do you say his name? Kelly Harvey? Kelly Harvey, okay. You know, I talked to him yesterday about hooking his sidewalks up with ours at the new park. What would be wrong if we went and asked him, hey, because he said he's willing to work with us, what would be wrong with asking him, would you donate this little spot here to go along with our little park?
Bring to Hutton Road?
Yes. I mean, it wouldn't hurt to ask.
Probably my...
He'll be there Saturday.
Yeah, my first thing on that would be is if you put this there, you would pretty much take up, I think that park area was designed to be about one and a half to two acres. Oh, okay.
The only, the only thing I would think about, and I don't know if this is true, one consideration might be, especially for children who are autistic, loud noises, bright lights can really affect them, and so I don't know if the sirens might have an effect on them, but that might be something we'd have to consider. Mr. Burrows?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, that, that's an entertainment corridor out there, there, there's a tremendous amount of amenities for a lot of diverse needs and wants out there, and to have that park there be part of the entertainment for a group of individuals that don't have access to something like that, I mean, I think it just puts icing on, on a very well-decorated cake that is known as our leisure-tenement community out there, and any type of investment that we can make in our parks and encourage visitation of those parks, and encourage visitation to the entertainment corridor, that, that we have a tremendous amount of time and energy and money invested. I think it's a tremendous opportunity, and, and I haven't seen any of the other, Mayor, any of your other concerns about the city parks or anything, but this, this just really at first blush fits pretty well, and I just don't want to see it go by the wayside, and we study it to death to the extent that we wait another two years, and some of these kids don't have an opportunity to, to play, or, and I'll just leave it at that.
Commissioner Magia?
Do we have a, a committee of families that have handicapped children that are reviewing this plan?
No, not, not yet. The UG used to have the Disability Board, and I did present to them, and I would go back before that group, I know, I know the group is different now, has a different name, but I would go before that board and, and revisit that and get their support again.
So, we haven't talked to, like, families that... So we haven't talked to, like, families that have children with disabilities, I was just curious, honestly, I'm fine with this the way it is, I don't want anyone to get the wrong idea, I'm just curious if a child lives that's handicapped, lives in the city off 7th Street, let's say, and we provide a bus service, I just know that I have three kids, and when they were little, and they don't have any disabilities, me getting the three of them anywhere was not easy, I can't imagine if some of them was handicapped, so I would just be curious for people that I'd like, and we could do this after, I guess, but I would just be curious how people that have handicapped children, how much of an effort is it to get them to where a bus route would be, and then get, how long will the bus route be to this location, so from start to finish, how long does that take?
That's a great point, Commissioner, I would be interested in in hearing what some of those parents said, would say, and and that that's a great point.
Yeah, or from even midtown or wherever.
I I agree.
Commissioner Bynum?
I just want to support the recommendation. The transit issues is an important one, you know, as long as, I feel like you've made a commitment to the community to work on the transit issue, because I think you've got a variety of potential solutions to that, not only in groups, but just day to day, every day, again, working with our transit partners.
Absolutely, I agree.
I would just want to support the recommendation.
Well, I think the county administrator would like to move forward on this, and unless someone is really would like to bring this back maybe to a standing committee, I'm I'm willing to see this move forward, but I'd like to know what the consensus here is. My only, again, my concern would be, perhaps, we we rather than assume that we're going to be able to solve the transit problems, maybe we need to work that through the providers to see what they could do and how, and if that's really going to activate the playground. I understand that it is a destination, and I think it was important for you to note that the average playtime is three hours, that that's significant, and I think that's a qualitative difference here, so that that definitely allays some of my concerns. Well, I don't see a really, a a ground swell of support to delay this, so I I think this moves forward unless someone else wants.
One thing, Mayor, as you said, I think have several around here have said, move forward with, you know, a plan or some type of effort to determine how it's going to be done, that's got to be part of it.
So we could say that we'll give you the green light, but let's solve that issue, let's have some strategy for maintaining access.
Yeah, we'll work on that. All right, thank you very much.
Very good.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for your presentation, and that concludes our meeting. And then we will convene at 6 o'clock for the sheriff's graduation.